So, everybody, welcome, welcome, welcome. We have three of our table leaders who had the audacity to have vacations tonight. What is that about? So what we're trying to assess, Lee is doing the assessment to make sure that all of our tables have a facilitator or have access to a facilitator, which is really good. We've got a great turnout. Get my singing bowl out. And I learned that we have another birthday we need to sing about as our streamers are getting ready to join us. Jackie Lawrence, you were in a meeting with me at 5:00 and you didn't say one doggone word about the fact that today is your birthday. What is that about? But I'm always interested in being radically inclusive. So has anybody else who's had a birthday in the last five or six days? Last year? Yeah. We can add you in. Yeah. So what name? Judith. So it's gonna be Jackie and Judith, okay? Ready? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Jackie and Judith. Happy birthday to you. Yay! Very good. And last week, I don't know if I made enough of this, but we were actually with our new cameras and our new technology. And that was a marvelous thing. And tonight, this PowerPoint is fed into the actual camera stuff because Brandon, who's in another room, is manipulating all that. So it's really nice to have professional technicians around. And we are being joined by other, more people from around. And so, welcome to all of y'all. I'm speaking to the two cameras. And if you don't know that these two cameras are streaming cameras, please familiarize yourself with that. Let that become our new normal. They are not security cameras and they are not overlooking your behavior and recording it with any governmental organization. So, welcome, welcome. Let's begin with prayer. The Lord be with you.
Hallelujah.
Let us pray. Oh, loving God, you have been so gracious with us, so generous with us this day. For the beauty of the earth, the glorious springtime we're enjoying, the relationships we had, the challenges we enjoyed and grew from. This gathering, we thank you for Richard Rohr and the Center for Action and Contemplation, this book, the food that is within us, and this wonderful faith community. We thank you also for visitors who are with us here physically tonight, as well as all those who are joining us by streaming. And we thank you and ask that you bless all of these gifts to the nourishment of our bodies, our journeys, our vocations, our world. And we pray that you keep us ever mindful and responsive to the needs of others. All these things we pray in the name of Jesus. Amen. Welcome. So tonight's gonna be a little bit different. It's gonna be pretty much our format that we've been enjoying, including time for resonance, sharing and resonance at the end. The end of the chapter we're looking at had options for something quite different, but it would have taken another hour, I think, for us to do it properly, to do that exercise. So when we get to that point, I will invite you to get with a friend or just do it yourself. Exercise, very good. But the difference tonight is I am in acknowledgement of how dense this material is. Ooh, there's some resonance already going on in the room. And how different it is for some of us who haven't deconstructed and reconstructed, I'm gonna try to stop from time to time and say, "Okay, how are y'all doing? Any questions, any challenges?" And not rush on through. Now, I say that at the same time that my colleagues have told me that this is the largest number of slides I've turned in. However, I have used, I think, a lot more artwork in this tonight. I'm finding that to be helpful for myself. Please understand, I'm on this journey with you too. I'm not, I don't have all of this fully digested and I'm arrived at it. So, um, slow me down. I'm learning, not only content, but the process of teaching. So please, don't hesitate to say, "Stop, Ed." Okay? Or, "Slow down." And, oh, I also got these wonderful table facilitators. They're helping me so much because they're having these table conversations with you toward the end of the night. And they're feeding back to me some places that I need to improve, like not answering a question while I'm returning to the podium and dropping my voice at the same time. So y'all have no chance in hell of knowing what I'm talking about. Now, obviously, we had an option to look an awful lot of material. But I chose this particular chapter because it's in the center of the book. And so far, all of the themes that Richard Rohr has been articulating are brought into pretty concentrated intensity around the issue of what in the world was the cross for? And so that's the question of the night. So, let's dive in. I do wanna remind you how important it is, in order for us to arrive at the resonance experience at the end of the night, to go ahead, and we're gonna have a moment or two of silence before we move forward. But in the silence, if you don't mind, welcome, welcome, come on in, that you observe yourself. It's gonna be a time for centering and also for, and staying with your breath, and also intentionally building an observation deck on yourself, on your life, your reflective self. So it is a facility that our contemplative minds have, which is to build an observation deck, attend to our own resonances throughout the presentation, having your notes, notepad ready, to make journal notes whenever you receive inner prompts throughout the night. Because at the end of the session, or toward the end of the session, when we get to the resonance exercise, that is gonna be a time when you are invited to tell a story that came to the surface as a result of the way the content of tonight struck you. So some of it will take you back to a childhood experience, some of it will take you back to last week, some of it will take you back to a wonderfully reconciling experience, and some of it will take you back to a fight you had, some may take you back to mystical experiences. So just please now, let's take two minutes of silence, and in that, practice following your breath and also building your observation deck so that you can observe yourself throughout tonight. Okay? Here we go. So, please be aware tonight of the slides that seem to suggest that there's no interconnectivity in the world and that everything is separate. Slides that are fear-based, where the presence of fear, and slides that detect the absence of love and grace. And remember that one of the things that we are talking about that is a foundation for everything we're doing, or an overarching umbrella of everything we're doing, is to get, is to understand that invariably, our God view resembles our worldview. And we may be living with a God view that was developed in a worldview of the 20th century, not the 21st, or maybe the 19th century and not the 21st. So much has changed in science that, to the degree we haven't kept up with the findings of science and let the worldview of science, contemporary science, impact our God view, that we may feel some cognitive dissonance between our Sunday selves and our Monday through Saturday selves. And you know what that can do over time? Create instability, including mental, spiritual, relational instability. And then, as Elia Delio uses Barbara Brown Taylor, she asks the question, "Is God predictable and mechanical, as in Newton's mechanical closed system? Or is God an open system where there's interaction with the environment?" Now, the first time I ever thought about that, it challenged my thinking about the changelessness of God, as opposed to God being in relationships and God, God's self, being changed by the relationships that God is in. Now, we can come back to that, to the degree you want to. I'm thinking that tonight is about underscoring that the Bible really is about not just these three things, but including these things, that with our creation, we were originally blessed, and that that's more powerful than any doctrine which came around later, that we are originally sinful. We'll look at that a little more. Number two, that God is the God of unconditional mercy, love, and grace, with an emphasis on unconditional. You can't earn mercy, love, and grace. Number three, that everything that has been made, has been made through Christ, or love, or logos. Using Christ, word, logos, consciousness, awareness, a lot of those words that are on our table, infinite horizon, big tradition, as interchangeable. So, let's unpack these three. On the left, I'm gonna repeat for three slides the same sentence. "God unconditionally sees all of creation as good, gives us unconditional mercy each new day, and places living divine DNA in absolutely everything that has been created and is being created." So first, example of the left-hand panel, Genesis 1. "God saw that he had made," pardon the, I'm just quoting from one translation I had, or you can say, "God saw that all that God had made, and it was very good. And there was evening, and there was morning, the sixth day. And you know that on the seventh day, God went to Hawaii and put up a hammock and rested on the seventh day." Note that this is in the first chapter of the Jewish scriptures, Genesis. So this is original blessing, not original sin, and there's no discontinuity in this with the Holy One. Now, no discontinuity with the Holy One is very important to me because I loved Karl Burt, but Karl Burt, unfortunately, felt that the sin of Adam and Eve was such that it made us discontinuous with God, which makes that incompatible with John 1, which we're gonna get to in just a second. Repeating the sentence again, "God unconditionally sees all of creation as good, gives us unconditional mercy new each day, and places living divine DNA in everything." So this is the second part of this. One of my favorite passages in the Old Testament, Lamentations. "Because of the Lord's great love, we are not consumed; for God's compassion never fail. They are new every morning, great is your faithfulness." Hence, one of my favorite hymns, "Great is Thy Faithfulness." Lamentations 3, 22 and 23. Repeating the same sentence again at the top. "God unconditionally sees all of creation as good, gives us unconditional mercy new each day, and places living divine DNA in everything created." Note that we're at the first chapter of John, and that writer thought that he or she or that community was rewriting all of Bible, and theirs was the new Genesis, the Book of Genesis. And it begins, just the way the Genesis book begins, "In the beginning." That's the opening sentence in both of those books. And it goes on to say, "In the beginning was the Word, and the Word was with God, and the Word was God. Through the Word all things were made, and without the Word nothing was made that has been made. And in the Word was life." So it's not just a, it's a verb, because it's got life in it. And that life was actually the light that is in all human beings, and that light shines in the darkness, and the darkness has not overcome it. Now, I invoked today in a conversation with somebody, one of my favorite new poems by Mark Nepo that he sent me during Holy Week, and I read it during all my Easter sermons about the fact that, and this is a man who knows wounds, physical wounds as well as psychological, but he's written about his physical wounds, and he says, "There is a light underneath all of our wounds, underneath absolutely every wound, there is a light, there is light." Well, that is resonant with this, that the light, that the life is the light of all humankind, and the light shines in the darkness, and the darkness has not overcome it. So a capitalized word here, which is, the Greek word is for logos. It could very easily be translated, divine DNA, divine blueprint, love, consciousness, on and on and on. And at points, Richard Rohr says, it also can be translated, the Christ, or Christ mystery, or Christ power. So these are our three basic cornerstones of, I think, the entire book and his entire alternative orthodoxy. Now, John Duns Scotus, whom everybody knows, right? Is a hero in this book. He is the counter to Anselm of Canterbury. Because the way John Duns Scotus understood the first three principles we just articulated was to put it this way, our predestination to glory is prior by our very nature, not by what we do, not by choices, but our nature, to any notion of sin. So John Duns Scotus is not denying the fact that there is sin in the world, there's evil in the world. He's simply putting it in this place, it's not intrinsic to us. We are not intrinsically evil. We are not intrinsically of sin, and we are not intrinsically fallen in such a way that that is our originality. Our originality is blessing, not fallenness. Okay? So, back to, here's his counter, Anselm, who was arguably the most successful Christian theologian Christendom has ever had, or particularly Western Christianity. But to my way of thinking about Jesus and the good news of God in Christ, he was successful to the error fork in the road, not to the helpful healing wholeness true fork in the road. Because he wrote this amazing tract called Cur Deus Ommo, which is why God became man, and we're gonna unpack that for a little bit. But a lot of the prayer book, a lot of hymns, and some texts in our scripture are either resonant with Anselm or follow Anselm. And it is a struggle for those of us who know about this stuff to sing certain hymns and to say certain things and to use certain prayers. So I just want to raise that as a tension that may be playing out in the cognitive or psychic dissonance of people who begin to read the likes of Richard Rohr. The way I put it is, have we been redeemed by his blood or by his love? So every time we sing "Hallelujah," sing to Jesus, "His the scepter, His the throne," when we come to the point, "Hath redeemed us by his blood," I never sing blood anymore. I just sing, "Hath redeemed us by his..." So, that's a little simplistic, but I'm happy to be simplistic sometimes. And I hope that it kind of helps you understand the forks in the road that we're dealing with, with Richard Rohr's passionate statement of alternative orthodoxy. The deciding point for me on love versus blood is that blood almost always suggests that God's love is conditioned on some quote-unquote sacred act of violence, which I don't believe in. Somebody's gotta shed some blood, or somebody's gotta sacrifice, and then God will change God's mind. That just doesn't stack up in my brain with the centrality of grace and love that I think are the cornerstones of the gospel being truly good news. So now we get to the question of the night. What was the cross for? Why did Jesus die? And all the material tonight is taken from chapter 12 in The Universal Christ. Welcome, welcome! We almost didn't start till you got here. Come on in. Glad you're here. This is a pure vodka, so if you don't want, if you, okay? Now, so here is what Rohr is arguing against. Substitutionary atonement, which was Anselm's theory about why God became human. And he argues that a bloody transaction was required because God took offense at the injustice of sinful people and had to get that disorder rectified or satisfied. Hence, the satisfaction theory, sometimes used interchangeably with the substitutionary atonement theory, and the problem of human sin against God. So Jesus was substituted for our sins on the cross. And I know so many people who cry with grateful tears that their sins were taken care of by Jesus. And what never is unpacked is that there was no need for their sins to be taken care of by anything, because God's intrinsic essence is to have mercy. So God takes care of it. God doesn't need some third party to take care of it. God takes care of our sins by what? Our mercy, his, God's mercy, God's forgiveness. It's not the last time you're gonna hear that tonight. We're gonna keep unpacking it. So is that why the cross was necessary? Or was the cross a revelation of the infinite love of God's flow of grace? Now, that's my God. This first God is the God I'm an atheist about. So let's go a little deeper. So another way to put this is why the incarnation and the cross. The first column is, was it a reaction to sin? Or the second column, was it a revelation of total love? Now, I don't know about you, but when I say these words, my heart resonates in a very negative, scary, fear-based way. When I read these book, these words, I relax, I expand, I feel oxygenated, and I'm not suffocating anymore. But try it on. It's, everybody has to decide. So if the cross was a reaction to sin, then you've got to spill blood to get to a distant and demanding God who is hanging around with conditional love. But you've got to prove that you love God by spilling blood, a metaphor for sacrifice or doing something. And the incarnation are God's revelation of total love. In the cross, God was spilling love, not blood, to reach out to us. This is a sea change of consciousness, a dramatic demonstration of God's outpouring love meant to utterly shock the heart and turn it back toward trust and love of the Creator. If love, forgiveness, and freedom can be bought, then they're not authentic. Love that is paid for is called on the streets prostitution. Now, I have to tell a story about the first paragraph on the right. "In the cross, God was spilling love to reach out to us. This is a sea change of consciousness, a dramatic demonstration of God's outpouring love." Now, I wanna underscore, "meant to utterly shock the heart and turn it back toward trust and love of the Creator." I inherited a pastoral care specialist in one of my churches. And he had a grandson who was in really bad shape psychologically, such that one time he slapped his grandfather on the face. And his grandfather, by some mystical power, turned the other cheek, and the kid slapped that cheek. And then the grandfather turned back the first cheek, and the grandson slapped that, and then one more time, and on the fifth turn, the grandson brought his hand up and wept and fell into his grandfather's arms. That's what I thought about when Richard said on page 144, "Outpouring love meant to utterly shock..." "outpouring love meant to utterly shock the heart and turn it back to its true self," which is trust and love of the Creator. Now for me, that's redemptive justice, not punitive justice. That's redemptive love, not conditional love. So, I think that one of the questions in this book is whether or not we believe in unconditional love. Is there such a thing as unconditional love? And do we believe in its power? And then I couldn't help myself, "Do you believe in love?" Who sang that? Whose song is that? Cher, my friend. So this is one of the most important slides up here. Jesus puts an end to all notions of sacrificial religion with its quid pro quo worldview. You give me something and I'm gonna give you something in return. That's transactional stuff. In four ways. Number one, the cross cannot be an arbitrary and bloody sacrifice entirely dependent on a sin that was once committed by one man and one woman named Adam and Eve under a tree between the Tigris and the Euphrates rivers. Because we have a much bigger understanding of creation than that the Tigris and the Euphrates are the center of the entire cosmos. So we've got a bigger scope in our worldview. And thus, Barbara Brown Taylor says in our God view. Then, number two, this idea of quid pro quo-ness, that idea reduces any notion of a universal revelation to one planet ours, at the edge of one solar system, in a universe of what now seems to be billions of galaxies with trillions of solar systems. That is how vast the Holy One, the Holy Creator, is. Now, I've begun to say, okay, let's do some hashtags for the rest of May. And one is hashtag God view worldview. That there needs, the human being, the genius of who we are, asks for there to be harmony between our worldview and our God view. And if we don't, then we have to intellectually bracket off somehow our Sunday morning for an hour and believe in one worldview when all the rest of our life, we're trekking on another worldview. Then, number three, Anselm's God is just too small for the marvelous creation we're part of, God view worldview. And then Jesus has, this is one of my favorite passages in Jesus, "Go learn what this means. I desire mercy, not sacrifice." And it's like a Buddhist koan. Now you go and just meditate on these words. Go figure out what these words mean. "I desire mercy, not sacrifice." And actually, Jesus is quoting Hosea 6 at this point, where Hosea says, "Thus says the Lord. I want knowledge of God, not your holocausts." Another word for sacrifices. Are you ready to stop me? Do you wanna stop and just take a breath? Are we okay? Anyb-, yes? Yes. So I'm called to, I've been told it's very good for me to repeat these questions. So the question is, when we're talking about God view worldview, are we talking about the culture? Or are we talking about cosmic stuff? What are we talking about? I'm referring to the latter. Because culture, in my mind, always needs to be critiqued. Because in every culture, you have historically advantaged people and historically disadvantaged people. And we don't want that culture to be telling us what who God is. However, let me parenthetically offer a social critique and a theological critique. I have been in the rooms in Birmingham, Alabama, in a Methodist church, in Cape Town, South Africa, in a reformed seminary auditorium, and a couple of other places that are escaping my mind, where theologians, all white males, gathered to write a theological justification for racism, for institutional racism. And my trainer, my mentor at Mercer, when I came on staff there, he liked to call all of his mentees boy or girl. Boy, don't ever trust what comes out of a room of nothing but white men. He was a white man. And he said, "Just don't trust it." Because there's not the internal critique that you have when women and communities of color are present in the boardrooms. So that's why I'm choosing the second cosmic worldview or scientific worldview, as opposed to the cultural worldview. Because I just have walking skepticism about any culture. And I love culture. But we have to be skeptical about it. We have to have a prophetic critique built into our brain about it. Now, the same thing about science. Science is not dishing out unimpeachable truths either. But science does have a courage, Allah, Galileo, and Copernicus, that religion oftentimes doesn't have, because religion wants to maintain the status quo. Or quote-unquote orthodoxy. So, what Rohr and many others, and Rohr is not the only person here, many others are trying to avoid by moving away from Anselm's substitutionary atonement is these three, uh, four things, actually. One, retributive justice instead of restorative justice. When I talked about the grandfather who kept turning his cheeks, that's redemptive or restorative justice. Retributive justice would have been for him to slap that kid to the ground and these days, call the cops and begin the first in the criminal record of this child. That's quid pro quo, tit-for-tat, retaliatory, or retributive justice. Number two, they're trying also to move away from seeing violence as good and necessary. And when you have a certain view of the cross, then you say, oh, there are times when it's a holy thing to use violence and it's a holy thing to impose suffering. Three, salvation is a one-time transactional affair between Jesus and God with our belief or assent instead of an ongoing daily transformational soul level event between us and God. Let me unpack that. So substitutionary atonement says salvation is all about heaven and hell, and it's also about the relationship between God and the Son, two members of the Trinity. And God punishing his son, torturing him and killing him. And the only way we can get into that transaction is not to be a part of it, but to believe in it. Hence, faith and belief become synonymous with intellectual assent. Oh, you say that happened between God and Jesus? Okay, I believe it or I don't believe it. If I do believe it, I'm going to heaven. If I don't believe it, I'm gonna roast in hell. Finally, they are saying that this Anselmian notion of why Jesus, why God became human, is that it develops one of the most counterproductive things that Christians have ever done. And that is to present God the Father as violent, unavailable, abusive, tyrannical, sadistic, and as a rage-holic dad. Now, one of the things that Richard Rohr, I think, has going on for him in terms of his attraction to a lot of people is that he's done his work as a man. Because one significant chapter of his life was to do male work. And he would take men on quests and have to look at their father wound, and, 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 and he did all that work. Every time I ever hosted Richard in Pasadena, we didn't have to do much publicity. The 1,100 seating church just was filled up, and 25% of them were young men. There's just something about this business of understanding that a lot of people have a father wound. And this theology perpetuates it. But an unconditional loving, weeping, embracing father like we have in the parable of the prodigal son, where the father said, "Don't give me your speech. Get up here and get in my arms and let me kill the fatted calf and y'all bring the ring and y'all bring the..." And here is this daddy who just came, and he didn't even wait for the guy to get home. He ran out to meet him. And the guy had rehearsed his speech in the pigpen when he came to himself. And it was as if, "I don't want your speech, I just want your arms." Well, men are not so comfortable leading with that part of our neediness, see? Oops, let's go back. So, what happens? It gives us a rageful, punitive, conditional, quid pro quo God. And the bottom is from the Sistine Chapel, right? And Richard was told in seminary that most of the images of God don't come from the Bible at all, they come from Dante. This rageful God. And we have television personalities and other people who embody that, like Ann Coulter. And here she was going on about how Houston, in all of its floods, was being punished by God for having a lesbian mayor. So do you see how it's just a slippery slope from a punitive, conditionally-loving God to that kind of stuff? Or our brother Pat Robertson? If Jews don't want to be slaughtered, i.e. in the Holocaust, they ought to become Christian. Because nobody is shooting up churches, this is before we started shooting up churches, because Christians are protected by God. Until we give people AR, whatever they are, automatic weapons. So, my point two slides back is that this is what this community of writers and leaders are moving us away from is this. We gotta move on. So just to unpack it again, substitutionary atonement makes love's, God's love, conditional, is based on necessary violence, i.e. a cross, and thereby is antithetical to the idea of grace. Where's the free love in that, unconditional love in that? And God is a cold brutal figure who demands acts of violence before God can love God's own creation. And our relationship with God is a mechanical relationship. If I do this, God will do that. It's transactional and conditional relationship with God based on a Newtonian worldview that the world is a mechanical, is a machine with moving parts, and if you do this, you take care of that. As opposed to a quantum worldview where nobody knows really how the cosmos is working. Well, we'll get to that in another night. So this is magical thinking. If I believe the right thing, say the right prayer, practice the right ritual, avoid a given list of sins, things will go right for me or my people in the divine courtroom. And this obstructs people and cultures from growing up and seeking actual changes in their minds and in their hearts. Transformation, not transactions. Now, I preached this in Pasadena, I'll never forget. The first Sunday, I really laid this out in a sermon. And I went on the lawn, and in Southern California, all the lawns are outdoor rooms. And we had, you know, 30 tables of ministries and all that stuff, and coffee and doughnuts, and we were lingering. And one guy came up to me in tears and he said, "Then why am I coming to church?" Do you feel the poignant sadness of that? That he was coming to church to earn God's favor, rather than to have a good time? All of his church was fear-based instead of dance-based. I come to church to dance, in my heart, and sometimes on my feet. So Anselm's, please forgive me for going back over this over and over again, but I'm telling you, when you're trying to change it inside yourself because you were traumatized by it when you were a child, you need to go back over it until you can act out a new story rather than the old toxic narrative. So Anselm's Cur Deus Homo, or Why Did God Become Human? The most successful piece of theology ever written. He was attempting to solve the problem of sin inside the culture of his time, which was a medieval code of feudal honor and shame. So Anselm said in effect, yes, a price did need to be paid to restore God's honor, and it needed to be paid to God the Father by one who was equally divine. Therefore, God ingeniously became a human being so that he could calm himself down. So Jesus became the way to appease an authority figure who was angry, punitive, and even violent. And many still operate this way, pardon of typos, especially if they had an angry or abusive parent. This helps people to re-traumatize themselves if they had an abusive parent. People respond to this kind of God because it fits their own storyline. And here we're raising in the importance of narrative. So hashtag narrative theology becomes my second hashtag. We will adopt a story about God that matches our story about ourselves and our parents. Or our Sunday School teachers, or our principals, or some of our teachers. And it's not until you have somebody who has something like my story where it's totally incompatible with the direct mystical experience you had, either in a relationship or with nature, that says, "There's total cognitive dissonance between what I know of God, my experience when I was five years old in a pine grove in which God told me that I was the most beloved creature God ever made and that everybody else was. That was free. I didn't have to do anything but play in a pine grove. And so I know that's true. And all this other stuff that was handed me, that's antithetical to that in my way of thinking and living, is not true." Now, Richard didn't mention this in this particular chapter, but one of the most important passages of Scripture is that you judge a book, I'm not a book, you judge a tree by the fruit it bears. And Galatians 5:25 is another one of my favorite places in the Bible, where it lists the gifts of the Spirit. Which is to say that if you see joy in somebody, or peace, or love, or generosity, or self-control, or magnanimity, you've got the Spirit flowing through that person. Please note, theology is always being framed, or at least impacted, by the current consciousness, whether that consciousness of feudalism, or Newtonian worldview, or quantum worldview. So if that's not the cross, what is the real meaning of the cross? Well, on page 147, Rohr says, "The divine mind transforms all human suffering by identifying completely with the suffering, with the human predicament, and stands in solidarity with it from beginning to end." This is the real meaning, not reaming. This is the real meaning of the crucifixion. The cross is not just a singular event, sometimes transaction, that I either believe or don't believe. No, it's a statement from God that reality itself, every day, every moment, has a cruciform pattern. Jesus was killed in a collision of cross purposes, conflicting interests with religion and the state and the empire, and half-truths. Jesus is caught between the demands of an empire and the religious establishment of his day. That's the very definition of tragedy. That's the very definition of tragedy. And there are all of us who have tragic moments or chapters in our lives. That's the essence of suffering, and that is the cross pulsating in our own life. And, I'm going to repeat the last section, "The cross was the price Jesus paid for living in a mixed world, which is both human and divine, simultaneously broken and utterly whole. He hung between a good thief and a bad thief, between heaven and earth, inside of both humanity and divinity, a male body with a feminine soul, utterly whole and yet utterly disfigured, all of the primary opposites." And that is a definition of an actual cross. And I put a Celtic cross up there from Ireland, because the Irish get the both-and-ness of that paragraph. Everything is intertwined in a Celtic cross, the Celtic knot, it's called. There's always a circle around the cross, which means there's always wholeness as well as fracturedness. And there is both north and south, horizontal and vertical, and none of that in the circle. And they stand in majestic tranquility against the Irish countryside nature. So that is what the cross is, which gives me a lot of energy. I mean, I am an elder going to Codgerhood, going to whatever else, and I feel like an eighteen-year-old inside because I think this is God. And this is the nature of God's grace and love. So last week I talked about mandalic thinking, and that in Richard Roar's thinking, everything belongs. And what's much more powerful than a line, I stopped, didn't talk much, just stopped much, is a mandala in which everything does belong. So here, I just Googled Franciscan mandala, and that's how I got this. And Francis was called by God to build the church that was in ruin. And you can't read this, but it says, "Jesus the Christ, in his crucifixion and resurrection, recapitulated all things in himself, everything in heaven and everything on earth." I love that notion, that Jesus recapitulated everything in his own being. He didn't embrace it, no, he recapped it. This one verse, Ephesians 1:10, is the summary, Richard says, of Franciscan Christology, which is that Jesus agreed to carry the mystery of universal suffering. He allowed it to change him, which is what Richard says is one meaning of resurrection. "And it is to be hoped changed us, so that we would be free from the endless cycle of projecting our pain elsewhere or remaining trapped inside of our pain." Now, friends, that is, in my mind, the ultimate liberation, is not to be trapped in my pain so that I project it onto other people, so that I don't have to feel it. But we have a lot of human beings who don't understand that responsible living is feeling their own pain instead of numbing their pain by hate, scapegoating, and projection. Hence, my favorite quotation from James Baldwin. I imagine one of the reasons people cling to their hates so stubbornly is because they sense that once hate is gone, they will be forced to deal with their pain. I just felt a bunch of resonance in this room with that statement. Roar, the cross has to do with lovingly owning and healing our pain, so that we would be freed from the endless cycle of projecting our pain elsewhere or remaining trapped inside of it. So what, my friends, this is at stake, is freedom and healing instead of scapegoating and suiciding. My made-up word for today. Another way to look at it, this is, hopes in my mandala we bought in Kathmandu. It's the Dalai Lama's favorite design for a mandala. And I put it up here because it's got everything in it harmonized around an organizing center. So we literally, our salvation is not about getting to heaven or being saved from hell. No, we are indeed saved by the cross more than we realize. The people who hold contradictions and resolve them in themselves are the saviors of the world. They are the only real agents of transformation, reconciliation, and newness. Christians are meant to be, pardon the typo, the visible compassion of God on earth more than those who are going to heaven. A Christian is invited, not required, because none of us is required to do anything to get grace, right? But we're invited to accept and live the cruciform shape of all reality. So all this stuff in us, if you took it apart, it could look absolutely overwhelming and daunting, make no sense of your life, and feel like, sometimes I felt, that somebody took my brain, put it in a blender, and pressed puree. Until you find out that love, my favorite word for Christ in God, is the organizing center of everything that is, everything that, everything belongs, love will organize it all. And I can, with God's help, I can hold all the contradictions that are in me and resolve all the contradictions that are in me so that I can be an agent of transformation, reconciliation, and newness. How do I do that? Develop your contemplative mind and live in a contemplative community, so that your community is reinforcing your resolving all these contradictions in yourself. I'm almost through. Do y'all know Janet McKenzie's work? Showing this to April today. She has all these wonderful icons, and this is called Jesus in Gethsemane. And what Roar says in a brilliant page, 148, that Jesus is, he says, "As some of our saints have said in different ways, Jesus is not loyal to groups, to countries, to battles, to teams. Jesus is loyal only to suffering. Jesus is as present to the suffering Iraqi soldier as he is to the wounded American soldier, as caring for the disillusioned Nazi warrior as for the discouraged British soldier bleeding to death in the field. And as Isaiah shockingly puts it, 'To God nations count as nothingness and emptiness.' The Jesus nation crosses all boundaries and frontiers. The gospel is simply the wisdom of those who agree to carry their part of the infinite suffering of God." Pardon me for standing in front of you, the screen. To put it another way, the woman caught in adultery, being stoned. Here is a modern photograph of the same event, all these pointing fingers coming at this woman. It's called the sin of projection. Humans almost always project their unconscious shadow material onto other people and groups. We hate our own faults that we see in other people. Jesus did not come to change God's mind about us. It did not need changing, because God's mind about us is total unconditional love. You can't get God to love you more or love you less. Jesus came to change our minds about God and ourselves, and about where goodness and evil really lie. And evil really lies in our shadow side and our not being aware of it and projecting our own things that we hate about ourselves onto others. Let the person without a sin cast the first stone. So the cross is about solidarity with the world. Become compassionate about your own suffering, and also be compassionate to others who suffer, all the way down to your lizard brain, where our hurts and our will to violence reside. And that's the hardest part of the three-tiered brain to change. It is lodged where we have almost no rational control in the reptilian brain. So the goal is to soften our hearts to all suffering, to where God's heart has always been softened toward us. The whole notion that we were created with the divine DNA pulsing in us, and also knowing through God's love that we would suffer, and that God would always have a softened heart about no matter what suffering we're experiencing. Then be hopeful about the fact that the mind of Christ still inhabits the world. All can have their Christ moments, in which we stop denying our own shadows, stop projecting those shadows elsewhere, and agree to our own deepest identity in solidarity with the And this is my favorite Coretta Kent post that I have in my office. What matters today is not what people believe or don't believe, but whether they care or don't care about themselves and about absolutely every other person, and about the millions of species that are going extinct this next year. So we've come to the end. Now I'm ready to review our process, and just in time. But tonight, we're going to see if there's anybody who wants to go back to any particular slide, or say, "You lost me at slide two," or whatever. This is a community. And I'll repeat, everybody who's streaming, I'll repeat the question.
Okay, in Anselm's defense.
Yes, yes.
He had some pretty good material to work with.
Anselm had great material to work with.
He has God making remises, the second, do all these awful things to people. I mean, huge suffering as a result of that. If you look at Job, this God doing this horrible experiment on this dear soul, all kinds of crap in his Psalms that just make him have to figure out a way to make some sense of this.
So before you go to your so, so, no, 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 just let me, let me bring everybody from Thailand with us. So Neil is perfectly pointing out that Anselm had a big plate to deal with in a lot of the Hebrew scriptures that had been given him, from horrible kings that he had to explain, to Job's theology, that God would visit all of this stuff on somebody and test them to see whether or not they loved him, and, and, and. Absolutely. And so, Neil Shorthouse, keep going.
I therefore think that we have got to take that, this is not some awful, rapacious human being trying to figure out a way to make us all feel terrible. I mean, and I think what you're saying is absolutely liberating and thrilling and wonderful, and I'm so grateful for it. But somehow we've got a whole mindset of history and theology and fundamentalist Christians who are so thankful for all these bad things that happened so that God could die for us.
Right.
I mean, it's just, it's a very complicated construct, and if it lasted for a thousand years, it only speaks to the complexity and the unraveling that you're trying to do for us. So we've got a lot to work on.
So all of that is true. So it's very complex. It speaks to giving an answer to a complexity, which is very neurologically satisfying, right? And it's not going to help us to beat up on Anselm. I mean, I remember first time I went to Canterbury, he was Archbishop for Canterbury, right? And so I went by his grave and didn't feel like crossing myself in Neeland and giving thanks to God for him, because I'd figured out how divergent his theology was.
You dropped into a duality at that point. God has loved you.
True. I loved him, but I didn't genuflect at his grave. I lay the problem, not at the feet of Anselm, who was doing the best he could, he was a very successful theologian, with the feudal mindset that he had. I lay the blame at the church that excommunicated Galileo and Copernicus, because they brought in a new worldview, and everybody wanted to hold on to the feudal worldview, and here we had a scientific worldview. And so I lay the problem, not at Anselm, but at the church, particularly the bishops and the power over bishops, who were saying, "Copernicus and Galileo, if you're not going to tell the line, you're out of here. Excommunication is the answer." Bam, that's my problem. That's where, historically, I lay the problem.
Where Anselm was before Galileo.
Right, yeah. No, yes, right, right. Yes, please.
Oh, I have a question. Would respect to the New Testament.
Yes.
How God is presented, because to me, there's a much more compassionate God than in the New Testament.
Okay, follow-up will be granted. Thank you for raising that. Because we, I'm sorry, I have a problem between the Old Testament God and the New Testament God. The New Testament God seems to be much more compassionate than the Old Testament God. So I want to challenge that. The Old Testament, the Bible is made up of sixty-six books, right? It's not one book. And we don't have two books, the Old Testament and the New Testament. The Old Testament is made up of forty-something books. And they are, right, forty-six, thank you. I love it. Lovey-Jet evangelicals in the room. And all of those are different. So we have history books, we have the Torah, we have history books, Chronicles and Deuteronomy and all that stuff. We have the prophets, and we have the Psalms, and we have some other materials. Well, it just so happens that the God of the prophets is very compassionate and very much like Jesus. It just so happens that some of the Psalms are very much like Jesus, particularly the Reconstruction Psalms, as opposed to the Psalms that say, "All is right as long as you're a good person." And then we've got some things like Lamentations, which I quote from. So I want, I rush to say, let's embrace compassion wherever it shows up, because we have Hosea saying, "Listen, you've got to understand the compassionate mercy of God." Follow-up question.
The other was kind of collateral of what you were saying, but constantly in the Bible for instance, the Jesus line, the one.
Right.
You said, "I'm going to do it, except it's not yet my time."
Yep.
"All of this, everything that happens, that's to fulfill the promise, not ever to do that."
Yes. So Jesus, particularly, and this is in John's Gospel, and John, John's view of Jesus is very different from Matthew, Mark, and Luke, who are the synoptic gospels, having a common view or optic. John's Jesus really does have this sense of the ripe time. It's not absent from Matthew, Mark, and Luke, but it's really there in John, and it, in what you're talking about, "It's not yet my time." John, I mean, John, yeah, John's Jesus says, "I just can't tell you everything there is to know, because you can't handle it. So I'm leaving," and this will be the ascension passage soon, "and so that the Holy Spirit, which is the Pentecost, can come." And so, that the Holy Spirit, which is the Pentecost, can come and lead you into all truth. So, it isn't time for everything to be revealed. We have to stay current with the revelations of the day, understanding that there's gonna be more to be revealed. These are great questions. Any others? Yes, one more. Bill?
Yes, yeah. One of the things that I think we're all struggling with is we all have varying degrees of education back in the early days of our life around Christianity. And what you're, the story that we're telling, and Roar is telling, is something that's pretty significantly different. And the other thing that I think is a stone's block is the definitions and words and the concepts that you're presenting to us takes some role of self-absorption and stuff. So, I'm just thinking that in order for this, these practices for us to become more learned and more open to learning these things, it's gonna have to be a much longer learning process.
I couldn't agree with you more, Bill. So, Bill's saying that because it's so countercultural and it's so different from the way all of us were not only educated, but marinated. You know, Flannery O'Connor says, "The cry, the South is Christ-haunted." Well, she's not talking about what Richard Rohr is talking about in terms of Christ. She's talking about Anselm's Christ, that we're Christ-haunted and that we're scared to death of God because God's a ghost and God is gonna jump out and say boo exactly when you're relaxed and let your guard down and start playing cards and dancing and having sex and smoking. Just the list, the list of sins I was given as a kid. Let me, let me, let me say one more thing. So, I just want to reinforce what Bill's saying. This is countercultural and it is counter-narrative. Because most of us in the South were assigned this narrative that came from Anselm. And it was about a tit-for-tat, quid pro quo vision of God. And my father, who was a Baptist preacher, told me, "Son, I don't preach." I mean, he, he was a Baptist, so he didn't have a lectionary. And he said, "I don't preach, Paul. I just don't understand him." I understand exactly why my daddy didn't understand Paul. It's because Paul was saying that you don't have the gospel until you have grace and love. And my father was so steeped, God bless him, a great human being, an inspiration to me and to y'all, if you don't him. He was steeped in being a good man as a way of getting to heaven, as a way of earning money for your children, as a way of being a leader in your community. And he was, he didn't understand grace. I mean, we would sing Amazing Grace till we were green in the face. But we didn't know that it was antithetical to any kind of quid pro quo. Back to you. Yes. Absolutely. I mean, you scratch a St. Lukeer and you find somebody who spent some time away from Christianity. Because you had to come to some kind of terms that it didn't make sense. And you came back to St. Luke's because somehow you didn't have to check your brain at the door and there was a community here. And there are so many people who self-identify as nuns, N-O-N-E-S, or atheists who are absolutely grooving with this stuff because it's an integration of all that they know. Yes, please. About dualist, yeah, non-dualist, yes. Right.
And I struggle a bit because I enjoy this, but it feels very much of a listening thing, not like this, but it is like this.
Yep, yep.
And so, is, yeah, how do you reconcile that or, I mean?
Well, to re... To repeat my brother Bill here, I'm still on the journey. I have, so, okay, so, the question is, we're gonna get into the material in the latter part where Richard says to embrace, let's get away from tonight's lecture, presentation. Let's go back to the first two about Christ and love and Thayer de Chardin and faith and science and all that kind of stuff. In order to embrace that, you will invariably be led to what all of us friends and the community doing this work call a non-dualistic mind. You will no longer see things as either/or, but both-and, which is what I'm trying to grasp at when I use the word mendolic. You have a mendolic mind where everything fits. So, as a teaching, so, I'll go ahead and tell you what I think's going on here. As a teaching technique, sometimes dualistic contrast is helpful just so you can identify what the concept is and what it's not. The journey's not over once you understand the contrast because you've got one more step to go, which is called integration. And that's the step of nondualism and nonduality. Yes, please, Sophia. Yeah. Exactly. Sophia, so, we have mentioned this a couple of times. So, Sophia's mentioning again. You can go just Google Richard Rohr and it'll lead you very fast to their website, the Center for Action and Contemplation, CAC, and you can subscribe for free to daily meditations. And they are simple. They are in bite-size. They're still pretty doggone substantial. And while we're giving a plug to their website, we should mention the podcasts where you can go from thirty minutes to an hour and a half, depending on what the topic is, of Richard and two of his young colleagues having a conversation about all the different topics that are in this book. And that's really worth doing, too. And you can play it while you're driving, except you have to watch because you can get up to ninety miles an hour. And then, a wonderful, friendly police officer can say, "What were you listening to?" Okay. I think we've, yes, Allison. I want to respond to this room tonight and we'll, I'm making adjustments as I go. Keep going. So, Allison is raising the issue of acknowledging the wrongs you've done or confession of sin. Richard is thoroughly immersed in the Twelve Steps. He wrote a book about the Twelve Steps called, I think, Breathing Underwater. Is that the name of that book? In this, he says, "Giving account," so accountability, "and inventorying," having a self-inventory, "and making amends" are all three very important steps of the Twelve Steps. So, none of this says that you are off the hook about giving an account of, account of your, whatever you've done in your relationship unless it causes too much harm. And that it is very important for you to take stock as a warding off of being in denial about your shadow side. To the degree you don't take stock, it's kinda like going to your pantry and seeing where you've got too much rice and not enough bullion or whatever. You go inside, see how much pride and egocentrism and self-aggrandizement and on and on and on you've got. And to the degree that we don't do that, that's gonna get bigger and it's gonna crop out in our projections and scapegoating. So, in order for us to be the change agents that the cross of Jesus Christ allows us to be, we have to do exactly what you're talking about. And that's a part of reconciling all those contradictions into our walking mandala. Yeah.
So, you're talking about projections and shadows.
Yes.
It's really hard to get to my shadow.
Yes.
But one of the radical ways to do that is to begin loving in the other the very thing that you hate, dislike. Because when you do that, your brain takes it in as you're loving yourself.
This, this guy's a damn psychotherapist now. He knows what he's talking about. But can we just repeat that as a mantra? The way to deal, start dealing with your shadow is to love in the other what drives you crazy in them. Because bingo, that is a reflection of what's going on inside you. Is that, okay, Daniel?
Yeah, I had two things coming to my mind. What is it that I'm kind of chuggling on inside? Because the shock and awe that is happening, like the way Jesus showed up on the scene, all of theirs was this at that. And I just want to let that reflect in for a second. But I think one of the ways we get to the shadow, and I think that Roar was talking about, is the, the deep love and deep suffering. That if you have encountered that and been in the midst of that, I would imagine, and I get a little emotional myself, but I have my own Christ encounter experience. And I think that if you look at your life and suffering or even joy, you have encountered this, the universal cross. And I think that's one of the ways, one of the questions that came from our team was, how do you live into this? I think the cruciform pattern of life moves us in this direction when we're keeping it up.
True.
And I think this is, this is helping us to understand what's really happening, what's really going on.
And that is a call to awareness, right? That this is the world, this is the way life is shaped for human beings. We not, I don't know, I can't speak for any other species, but sure, our life is cruciform. And when you see a cross from a mendolic perspective, it is a way to organize everything and be aware of, or have some awareness, level of awareness, of your shadow side. April?
I'm gonna add to what Lewis said, and I am not a psychologist. But it's something that occurs to me for, for some people, and that is, if you look at the idea of projection and you're seeing something in someone else that's repulsive or whatever, and say they might be pit-filled to you, your own hate might not be directed out. It may be directed to yourself. And that's as detrimental and as punishing as it would be as if you acted it out on somebody else. So, to, to view that, you may not be, you may be a loving, kind person on the exterior, but what you feel is directed to yourself.
So, let me just repeat that for the streaming friends, that we're not talking only about projecting and scapegoating others. That this denial, this living in denial of our shadow side, also to the degree that we never do any of that work of awareness, is also self-sabotaging, punishing, and killing. That's why I invented the word suiciding, because we have to if we want to live with vitality and compassion so that we're not making other people suffer and we're not making ourselves suffer. But to the degree that we refuse both of the awarenesses, we're gonna do both or one of the other. Yes, Carol?
I was just thinking, because in all this discussion, we do not talk about marriage at all.
Right.
And Roy sets up a whole chapter by talking about marriage and what he calls the deep feminine.
Mm-hmm.
He says, "Like the presence to resolve the deep feminine offering works underground and in the shadows. And from that position, creates a much more intoxicating message." So, I'd like to understand what that fear is because of God's love.
Yeah.
And the God of fear, which is why Anselm.
Right. So, the question is about the divine feminine and about the feminine. And I promise you, I will address that next week because I felt that we just didn't have time to do that and that. But that's where it's gonna become more whole-making, is when we get to the divine, I mean, the feminine soul that he alluded to with Jesus, you know, that this cross is a way of bringing all these cross purposes and living a mixed life, including the masculine and the feminine. And we totally out to lunch if we don't bring that in and really emphasize it. Yes.
How does Richard Rohr deal with, I can go on and on, the sex of it. But, you know, if you were to look at marriage, repeated by everyone coming to the altar because, you know, the DNA of the cross.
To the Eucharistic table? So, we are floating the idea of closing our fifth Thursday night, we're at our third Thursday night, by having a Eucharist the way we have it when we're with Richard, which comes from the Isle of Iona, that Celtic knotted intertwinedness, where everybody is welcome and we feed one another and we are priests to one another. So, we're gonna embody that on our last session in May. This has taken the Spirit's turn tonight. We don't have time for resonance and I'm cool with that. Although I love resonance and resonance has become a more oft-used word around St. Luke since we've been cracking it up on here. I've really been using it, loving that. So, time check, it's ten after eight, which does give us time for more questions if there are more questions, but some time for some meditation. And then, a little just checking in with the person next to us and then having our table check in about what went well, what didn't go well tonight. And then bam, we're out of here by eight twenty-nine. Does that sound okay for an agenda for the rest of our time together? But before we go into silence and stillness, let's see if there are any other questions. If your heart's beating fast, you still have a question to pose. And it may not be for your benefit as much as it is for somebody on the other side of the room. Please.
It's kind of a continuation of my last question about doing and making it like including.
Yes.
Including the other in the other part, finding everything that fits. So, as I've like gone on this journey and tried to unravel all the things I was taught and then put together and, and learn, part of what I've kind of settled on and, and I'm wondering if this is where Roar is going in saying that this is the way that he believes God is. And this is who God, who believes God has been revealed to be. But if you see it different or if you experience it different or if like from the other perspective that we talked about, now if you fall into that camp, like that's okay, like stays, like be there, know God there. And because, because from the tradition, from the evangelical tradition I'm raised in, my posture as I learned this is to be evangelized to my, to my new side.
Exactly. Oh, do I know what you mean? I am what you mean. Who's leading a book class for five weeks in May? Yeah, I'm totally with you.
So, yeah, I don't, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, how that fits.
So, the question is, what happens when you get to a new place? And what do you do with the folks who are not in your place? And you think that this is the best place because it's giving you life and oxygen. Is that to say, intrinsically, that everybody else who's not with you, they are oxygen-depleted? And where's Richard Rohr on all this? Is that, okay. So, that's the question. So, you will run into in this book, sprinkled all the way through, references to Ken Wilber. Ken Wilber is a person and his book is in the, by the way, Richard's glossary, I mean, bibliography in the back of this book is quite exhaustive. And I'm, I reached a new point of fulfilling my promise to get you all a kind of a one-page bibliography that I like. So, it's on this way. It really made a lot of headway today. But Ken Wilber is in that. And Ken Wilber is a brilliant genius and has a thing called spiral dynamics. in which he understands that life is developmental and evolutionary, but we're going around as we go up over the same territory, hence a spiral dynamic. And one of the things that he has, as someone who claims non-dualistic thinking, is that when you transcend a place where you have been, you still include it. So there's this mantra called transcend and include, not transcend and condescend. Two very different ways of looking. One is mandalic thinking, that it all belongs, everything belongs. And one is spectrum linear thinking, that I'm more advanced here than I was six months ago. And the people who were where I was six months ago are inferior in their thinking. Now, I want again to emphasize, you don't get there by thinking your way there. Richard loves to say, "We act our way into new way of thinking, rather than think our way into a new way of acting." So you have to act with compassion, embrace, and integration of everybody who represents where you were when you were seventeen. Because you have understood that you don't transcend if you're still condescending. The only way you really transcend or transform is to include. So you transcend and include. And that is what I think is a contemplative move. It is a mystical, magisterial, magnanimous thing that will make you a Mahatma, a great soul. Is if you can. And James Fowler at Emory, one of my professors when I was out there, you know, he had these six levels of faith development. And he said, "The reason so many human beings never get to the sixth level is that the people who are at the sixth level," and he named Martin Luther King Jr., Gandhi, and Mother Teresa, "is that they treated absolutely everybody else with equal dignity." And it was heartfelt, it was genuine, it was coming out of their authentic self. And, he said, "You get there by love and suffering and contemplation." Which is Jesus, right? Yes?
Another metaphor I really liked is, um, the interior castle. And Teresa Babla, and one of his really liked, talks about rooms in the castle. And it's not linear, it's not, you go back and forth, you know, it's sort of, uh, we were throwing all the things.
Yeah. A great saint, Teresa Babla, and her classic is the interior castle. And there's nothing linear about it. You're going from room to room. Yes, please, Bill?
The, uh, one of the things that you touched on tonight, which I really hadn't thought much about, is how, um, we interface with others.
Yes.
And I think maybe some, at some point in the future, we're gonna be more, uh, work on that. Those concepts and how we do it in, um, you know, I've got kids, I've got a wife, I've got friends. All of that love is, you know, a number of different areas, including Christianity, so, um, and, and really want to, I think, expand your Christianity to others. But how does this, all this kind of thing you talked about tonight, and Roar talked about, how do we use those, and explain them, pour them into our outreach?
Yeah. So Bill's raising the whole issue of interfacing with others, particularly people who are different. And how do we literally, genuinely interconnect with somebody else who has a different perspective, but share our perspective, but, you didn't say it, I knew you meant it, in a non-condescending and non-coercive way? And that's what, I see, I think that's what a faith community is all about. Is that we help one another in that, and we challenge one another in that. And we get pointed up that we're not perfect at it yet. And that we aren't kicked out of the community because we're not perfect at it. You don't have to be flawless to be perfect. And that's a really wonderful thing to have. Yes, Lee?
Oh, no, Bill said, um, Westboro Baptist is-
Right.
In town to, um, attend the graduation, spell the gospel.
Are they here now, or coming?
They're coming, I think it's this weekend. So helping understand how Bill and I are gonna reach them.
So, the question is about Westboro Baptist Church, and these are what we call the Mean Christians. And they bring in their children with these horrible signs. And they will do everything as bold as attend a funeral for a soldier who fought in Afghanistan, and they have a little eight-year-old holding up a sign saying, "The United States of America is a whore." And it's horrible language. And they really are trained, and it's a small little Baptist church. And they're trained to be mean and confrontive. Um, we hosted in Pasadena, the Muslim Public Affairs Annual National Meeting in our church. First time in the history of the US that a Muslim organization had its annual convention in a church. And so they showed up. Well, what is happening in most cities now is that we're kind of connected well enough that there are quote-unquote "angels" who come and stand between the hate and the yelling, and the people they're yelling against. Just to say, "We've prayed about this, we've gone through this, we're linking arms, we're gonna treat you with love, and we're gonna absorb some of that energy so it doesn't get back to the people you came to hurt." So, my spirit, so how, so Lee wants to know how we're gonna reach them? Well, you may not. So here's my story. So they came to this church where I was, in Pasadena. And y'all may have heard that I've written a book, and so the loudest guy with the biggest carotid arteries in the whole group stood out, and he yelled, and held up my book in one hand, the left hand, and held up the Bible in the right. And he says, "You all," and he was just yelling, "y'all have a decision to make. Are you gonna follow God or Ed Bacon? God or Ed Bacon? God or Ed Bacon?" And then he threw my book on the ground and stomped it. And we just laughed. Because you have to stay playful, which is one of the chapters of my book, or you're gonna really live a fear-based life. So I went over to him and thanked him and all that kind of stuff. And I was so disappointed that I couldn't find that book, because I wanted to sell it on eBay, you know? Because that would've made a bunch of money that the Westboro Baptist Church stomped on my book. You ha, I, so, this is not a promotion of my book. You do have to practice some habits of love that get you out of condescension, coercion, judgmentalism, dualistic thinking, on and on and on. And I give you eight to choose from: generosity, stillness, community, compassion, forgiveness, truth, candor, and playfulness. And it is just really important to practice playfulness when you feel yourself getting uptight, because somebody else is uptight. So we do have to stop now. I think the Spirit's been moving through us with all these great questions, which I've learned from. Let's have, let's have four minutes of stillness, and streamers, please be still with us in your hospital rooms, your bedrooms, wherever you are. And then we'll have our closing exercise, and I'll come and greet you, and then we'll pray. And bam, by eight twenty-nine, we're outta here. Okay? So I'm gonna sit and pray also. So always just give your body the dignity it wants. I'm not a fundamentalist about have to have you both hands, feet on the floor and all that kind of stuff. Just kind of get there, and begin to breathe, and the singing bowl will tell us what time we're gonna start timing, and we'll go for four minutes, okay? Thank you. So, before we close with a prayer, I'd love for you to just turn to your table, you can put any configuration you want, and just talk to your table facilitator about tonight. How it went for you, things you liked, things you'd like for us to adjust. They write me an email after every one of these sessions, and so that I can find out what each of you thinks. And that changes things. So please do that, and then, just for two, three minutes, and then we'll come back and close. Go with me to the camera. So, again, I want to thank all of you for being with us tonight. We loved having you here. I feel your presence. Um, let us hear from you. Go to our website and get my address, or it's ed@acertainformula.saintlucychurch.org. Love to hear from you, have your mailing address, email address, and your questions and your thoughts and reflections. Um, and my wife is here to say hello to certain people who we know are with us. We love you, you are loved here. Uh, we think we're in, um, a global community of people who are asking questions about an alternative orthodoxy, a love-based religion in life, a oneness-based religion in life, and a light-overcoming darkness religion in life. And if you want to be with us, please join us in things like this, join us for Sunday worship. And if you'd like to make a contribution, we have a donate button on our website, so please go and press that. God bless you, thank you for being with us. So I hate to interrupt you, but I want to maintain my contract with you, so that we can end at eight twenty-nine. If you want to linger after the prayer, please do so and file any more, and help yourself to the gin and the vodka and the tea and the stuff. Shall we please stand and pray? The Lord be with you?
Yes, be with you.
Let us pray. Holding hands is very appropriate if you'd like. We thank you, oh God of grace and generosity and abundant love and light, fulfilling our hearts with the sense of community with one another, with you, with learners, with creation, with the love mystery that pulses in the center of every cell of every part of creation, with our brother Richard and his community, with all the cosmos. Because we understand that your love and your embrace exceed the great immensities of which we are a vital part. So now, with hearts full of gratitude and in some places confusion, but knowing that we've got a little journey ahead of us, we pray that you will make us aware that you are our constant companion as we now travel, and as we arrive at our places where we will sleep tonight, and may those places give us restorative sleep, so that we are awakened and ready to be your instruments of love, grace, oneness, and light tomorrow in every encounter we have. And now we pray the words our Savior taught us to pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, glory, forever and ever. And let me give you the assignment. So we went through one sixty-eight, I think it was. And so, it'll be the next fifty pages, and that goes to page two oh one, through chapter fifteen, please. Yep. Chapter fifteen. Thank you very much.
Can you flip back to that slide that lady-
Yes.
And that lady that, uh, said that wonderful thing that you like so much, uh, uh...
What Matters Today?
Yeah, what, my goodness, what a statement.
Isn't it?
Oh!
It's from a, a French priest.
Oh, it's a French priest?
Yeah.
It's a lady painter.
She's the artist. And it's Abe Pere, Pierre, P-E-R-E, or P-I-R-E. Abe Pere.
That's a bottom-line statement if you're ever...
I really love it.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, I bought that at her convent after she was dead. And it's my favorite. Do you know her work?
No, no.
So she and Dan, she and the Bergen brothers were very good friends.
Oh, really?
And they were all in the war. I loved the bottom-lineness of it.
Yeah, right, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, let's talk about whether or not you care. Thanks, sir.
Interesting how the, kind of the, the conversation we were having between in five and six just ended up manifesting in the room without any of our broader...
Absolutely. It totally did. It was very interesting. I'm just stunned at how energetically connected we all are. And we don't have to even be aware of it for it to be active.
Yeah, it's true.
I love it. Thanks for helping gather these stuff up. How about it?
I think you didn't quite get what I was saying.
Oh, okay.
So, and I accidentally spoke to Lewis, I said, "Lewis, this is what I, you know..." So I was trying to clarify.
Right, 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 yeah. About hurting yourself, right?
Yes. So say, um, and I had a real aha moment in there, um, about a relationship that I'm in. And how frustrating it is because there's a lot of anger and stuff that's put on me and a lot of not being seen and a lot of not...